I can't, you're behind the screen.
Oh, there he is.
Oh, there's Jimmy. Okay, it is Friday, May 12th at 12 o'clock. We have a quorum present. I am calling our pre-budget workshop to order. Madam Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for citizen comments?
No, ma'am.
Having no one signed up for citizen comments, council will be on the top of page two, pre-budget workshop. I'm going to go ahead and say all the things that we're going to talk about, and then I'll be turning things over to our city manager and assistant city manager. We will be discussing drainage master plan and drainage fee discussion, transportation impact fee discussion, 2024 one-time request, five-year CIP update, fiscal year 2024 bond issuance, and a street cost model. And with that, Ms. Correa, you are all, you are in charge.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. We have put together a brief presentation with some very, very high-level numbers because we realize the execution of these plans will end up happening in phases. We just can't take as big of a bite as some of these numbers indicate. So, most of these are in the public works area, so Trey is actually going to run. He and I will just be handing it off back and forth. So, Trey.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Again, like you mentioned, Mayor, we have these six pretty big, high-level topics we're going to go over. But we'll start with the drainage master plan and the drainage fee discussion. We moved this slide up first and foremost because I think there's really something important here for us all to look at, and that, if you'll notice, is the number at the very bottom. What you see in front of you is a capital improvement list based off of the drainage master plan study. We came through, and I could highlight that if you'd like. It's about $121 million, give or take, 122 million. And that was for some detention pond fixes, some Gills Branch flood mitigation. Remember, this is all the projects that we've been talking about for quite a while. We looked at Gills Branch at Highway 95, a lot of local stormwater improvements. A lot of those local stormwater improvements are, they seem pretty massive, but over time, the rainfall data has changed, as everybody's aware of. You've heard me talk about Atlas 14 at least 1,000 times. And what happens there is, now that we have more rain, almost instantly, all of our infrastructure's undersized. So, that took that into account. That's probably why you see a really scary number, but it is no small joke. And then we'll talk about what goes into a drainage master plan and how we came up with this.
Trey, on the list, can you say which ones of those plans we are, aren't we going after some grants on the Gills Branch?
Yes, ma'am. We've actually applied for a grant for Gills Branch. We have applied for some, a grant for Piney Creek, which accounts for about, what is that, 19 million dollars there? And actually, half the folks that performed this for us went in and submitted a grant on our behalf, just because it was a project that they wanted to share, and FEMA wanted to talk about their program, so it's a big deal.
Okay, I know you're doing overview, but as you guys get closer in the budget, you might say, like, okay, this one's a grant, and this would be the match, you know, because that may help with the priority, and it will also help council know how much they have to put away, put aside to be able to meet that match.
And a lot of times, we'll do that. Once we have an understanding of what the full, our match is, then we only budget the $3 million match, or the $5 million match, or whatever that is.
Trey?
Yes, sir.
Could you explain the ranking value, how that, how the rank comes about, and what it means to us?
Some of the ranking is, well, it's kind of how staff prioritize, and we'll talk about that a little bit later. There's stuff in here for operations and maintenance that's built into the fee that you see here below, which isn't ranked 1 through 11.
If you go four slides up, you can see the scoring matrix.
Yeah. So, we basically took into public safety was our first priority, then economic value, environmental, and then project timing, and then just the social aspect of, you know, it made good sense for the neighborhoods and things of that nature. But that was the criteria, and that's how they ranked in that particular order. You want to keep moving forward or go back a little? So, again, you know, the question we asked was, looked at the ETJ, and we said, you know, it's a comprehensive evaluation of existing conditions, and then developing some kind of flood mitigation solutions. You're aware, because of the recent 2016 floods, 2015, 2016, several others, again, in 2019, we had quite a bit of historic rainy events, so that's why we started this. Had an increase in population, of course, aging drainage infrastructure, which we talked about, and then just a plan for resilient future. That was kind of the key. Some of the drainage solutions are easy to see. It's like road crossing improvements, channel improvements, storm drain improvements, so on and so forth. And this is just an example of the areas that they found that were flood-prone. Right, and you can see they're all along the edges of creeks and floodplains. Again, we've talked about the scoring matrix, and some of our next steps here will actually just be to review the drainage master plan overall, and then we're going to provide our final set of comments, and you'll see a presentation to council here very soon.
I believe the pro-rata ordinance that we passed was for water, wastewater, and roads.
It's for all infrastructure.
Will it cover drainage? So, does that provide a fee in lieu of for regional detention, or not?
Yes and no. So, what other cities do, similar to us, who need a significant amount of improvements, most of the time, it's going to be channelized improvements, trying to move, trying to move that water back into the flood area or the floodway. So, we call them master channels. Cities have three, four, five master channels throughout, and then those master channels have impact fees. If a developer is going to oversize their component of the master channel because we anticipate a greater amount of flood coming from a particular area, then what will happen is, that's where the pro-rata. If they're going to be able to help us oversize or capture by sending things our way, then yes, there'd be a little bit of recapture, but master channel impact fees are a little bit different because they do really try to only take into account what you're shedding in that direction. The challenge for us is from an overall basin perspective.
Yeah, and that's kind of where I'm going, because there's some, and we all know, the detention on each lot is really not ultimately what's best for the drainage, and that would allow you to have additional developmental property if there's a fee in lieu of. And I just, I was thinking, do we need to add the ordinance for the fee in lieu of for drainage, or does the one that we have cover it? Or, I just want to make sure you give yourself some options.
I will double-check. What's also important is, as we create these master channels, which some of our areas are going to have to drain in that way, those are all significant areas for parkway improvements as well.
Yep.
Porbes Christia is something called Bronner Parkway. It is a master channel that splits pretty much the city in half, and it is a beautiful green space that serves dual purposes. It'll hold, it'll drain slowly, and then it serves as a park area, a beautification area during those times.
And that's what we have for Gills Branch, because we had the tiered with the trails alongside.
Yes, ma'am.
So that you can handle pretty much up to a 25-year and not impact the trails, but you do have the ultimate cross-section so that you can contain everything. I just, I wasn't sure if what we just passed will cover all of that. That was my only question.
And some of the costs that you see associated with this $121 million is operations and maintenance. And when they, when you're presented from Hafen Associates, forgot their name for a minute, when they come in, they'll actually go into the detail and the breakdown of per-lot cost, and then the cost associated with impervious cover. So, for the commercial, there'd be any impervious cover. In fact, for the standard lot, that has a 40% coverage required, could be $6, $3, something like that.
If somebody's trying to develop inside that watershed, they don't have to pay for the engineering for the drainage, and they can pay the fee in lieu of, and then we get the water to where we're wanting it to go anyway. It's just kind of a win all the way around.
Ultimately, those riverine improvements are the large channel improvements that take care of the flood mitigation. If that's something the council decides to do at a later date, you may want to build capacity in there as well, and then permit and sell that capacity to the developer. So, that could be an option. But we're, this is, again, just holy smokes, $121 million. So, if we want to talk about drainage anymore, I'm happy to do so, but I think if you're okay, we'll move on to transportation impact fee discussions.
And so, I always, my stomach always hurts when I read impact fees, especially one for transportation, because it's one thing for us to be able to account for water and wastewater. It's a whole other thing for folks to feel like they've got to pay for what they're traveling on, especially residents. So, this does not say we're going to put in a fee. It is a study that if we were ever at a point in the future to want to approve a fee, these are some of the necessary steps we would have needed to take.
That's right. And in our budget meetings from last year, the EDC helped us and partnered with us and paid for a portion of that, because they really liked the idea of us being able to go ahead and do some capital improvements inside the city limits, new streets, new intersection capacity, and then have an option as a tool in the toolbox to work with economic development and say, hey, we're going to waive these fees, or something of that nature. So, again, like Sylvia mentioned, no, no fee has been put in. We just want to have a conversation about it, and that.
And a whole bunch of those.
That's right. The public meeting for that, we will actually see a resolution on this, this meeting announcing that we're going to have a meeting, right? That is a requirement, as is the statute. So, the impact fee components is the service area. What we're going to talk about in our next meeting is the, in June, will be the land use assumption overview. We'll touch on them at a real high level here, some capital improvement plans, and then, you know, the requirements associated with that. So, what council's role in the next steps in the process will be, will be two public hearings, a resolution to set the ordinance if they so choose, comments from the Impact Fee Advisory Committee, which we've already met once at B&amp;Z, will do again next month. And again, we'll talk about the land use assumptions, the impact fees associated with it, any kind of maximum fee for the. It's just like water on the other side. They will give you what the cost is, but you can set the fee however you want. You want to cut it 50%? You can do that. Want to cut it 30%? You can do that. That is a good rule of thumb, a lot of times, the fee is massive, and then they'll just cut it in half. Where we're at right now is the draft report, which was actually in the folder, I believe. So, I'm sure that you've probably had access to the draft report, which has a whole lot more detail, but I'm just going to show you a couple of pictures from it. We're going to talk about the land use assumptions. So, what we've done is look at, again, new annexed property. You should see some improvements pretty soon that will happen through here as well. This is under an annexation agreement and has been sold, so we can actually go ahead and annex this piece as well. That's something you'll see coming up. But in that, we basically split into two service areas, service area A, service area B, right? What you see in the pink here is currently, or the pinkish color, is the ETJ, but those will also be annexed as we move forward. So, if you'll notice, to the, to the top, there, just around Blakey and that area there is actually the Valverde subdivision. So, eventually, that will be in the city limits as well. But we pointed out, since they're not at the moment, this one was with the original map, we circled and said, hey, it's already been annexed. We expect the rest of these to be annexed here in the future. What we've looked at with the draft land use assumptions, the single-family, the multifamily, what we know that is on the books today for development, this is not talking about what's coming up, is broken into two sides, A and B. The residential component for the impact fee would be 7,900, and the, you know, the living unit equivalent, just like with a water and wastewater, and a little bit over 6,100 for commercial.
Get back to your 500. This is your 10-year assumption.
That's right.
You already know what's happening here. 969. You know these are going to be annexed. You know we're bringing, you know we're serving, you know we're building. I think these numbers are already a little bit stale, but it's at least a good place to start.
And as, actually, as you increase in people, the fee will go down, because you have more people to share. So, as we continue to grow, a good thing to point out is, it'll actually be, everybody shares the impact a little more, and more hands, lighter work. The capital improvement plan that you see, like I said, basically, it's area A and area B, but it's west of the river and east of the river. Some of these you're already familiar with. One I'll point out that everybody knows where it's at, for example, is Cagna Street, the new extension, which is grant-funded, something that would be pointed out. This is Orchard Parkway. This is Greenleaf Fisk. Again, this is just part of our multimodal, these all came from our original transportation master plan, by the way. Our 2016 transportation master plan has been overlaid into here. They're updating that, and some of these alignments have changed, and we'll talk about that later. But especially in our leadership summit that's coming up, we'll talk about the changes in the county's transportation master plan and how we relate to each other. But I want to just give you an overview of what you see, those street segments and components. One of them is Blakey Lane, things of that, again, on the east side of the river, or area B. That's right.
Ken, you want to talk a little bit about what we're working with?
Well, and some of this, this actually includes our intersection improvements. This includes several, I didn't, I didn't put the list in there, but it is, again, in that reported packet. It has, it has a broken-down list of, should have gotten a report in the packet from Kimley Horn, and it talks about.
Talk about what we're doing here with the school.
With South Street. So, some of that small-area plan that we've mentioned before, we know that the school's building, they're expanding the bus barn on Levers Lane, right? We've talked about putting in South Street. We've talked about intersection improvements to move traffic better around the Walmart HEB area. All of those improvements are brought into this map, and that's where the costs come from.
Around the Buc-Ee's.
Around the Buc-Ee's as well. So, at the intersection of Highway 95 and 71, yes, thank you, we absolutely know that the traffic's, you know, insane there. And Tech dot actually took the role on this, and we took that off of our list. Tech dot's leading that, and they've come back with about $800,000 worth of signalization improvements that they'd like us to participate in, not to mention some impacts to local streets. For example, Pine Street would not, would no longer be a full, open intersection. It may be a right-in and a right-out. All right, so no left turns. Because what they've found is the crash, the amount of crashes from Chestnut to 71 continue to increase with the traffic, and they want to reduce as many left-turn movements as they can.
It's like 16 a quarter.
Yeah, it's pretty significant. There's.
Yeah, but we did have the school at that meeting.
We did.
Because part of what we did, if you recall, that we let them continue with their building permit without finishing the plat at the high school, and part of that interlocal said they were, they would work better with us on transportation and circulation. So, bringing Tech dot, the school, and us and the county to the table will probably end up with a new circulation around this school.
Yes. So, and around that, around the bus barn and around Email Elementary. So, they're actually proposing a light at Walnut. So, at Walnut and 71, right, that's the side street between Casa Chapala and Buc-Ee's. And what we've had preliminary conversations with the school has been also adding Walnut across the property, where the soccer fields are.
And I assume we could get those timed, since those are so close together. If those were synchronized, that would make all the difference in the world.
I said that. I said, please don't do it like Hassler, where Hassler is red.
And that is the goal. That's the $800,000 additional in synchronization that we were talking about on top of the cost of the light. Let's go to the next slide. So, some of the next step for this, and again, Jake with Kimley Horn will be here in June to talk a little more in detail and give you the cost for this associated with it, and so on and so forth. But the next steps for council is going to be, we're going to bring our comments, and we're going to talk about the transportation impact fee and the CIP. We have to set up a public hearing, which will be June 13th, where you'll talk to Mr. Kimley Horn himself. And prior to that, we're going to actually have a notice in the newspaper. July and August timeframe is when we would set up maximum fee with the draft study, and then if we're, again, if you intend to do this, we're talking collection rates, effective dates, and other policy items. Everything that is in this CIP has to be in the city limits, and that's kind of how this works. We can't make improvements outside the city limits, and so collect those back. Is there any more questions?
Are you going to talk about intersections in a different area?
We can talk about it when we do the CIP, if you like.
Do you have it in CIP?
Well, I have a map I'm going to pull up here in a little bit, and we're going to talk about all of the CIP projects in this list.
It's later.
Yeah, okay. Sure.
We figured we were going to give you all of the data and then open up the map, and we'd be talking about things from.
We can talk through that, as long as you like.
Well, I was just talking about that we had said to put money towards the intersections before we got the transportation study back. That was the intersections I was talking about.
And those will be completed next month?
Yeah.
Next month. So, those, those have come back, and they've worked that into this impact fee, because we've already, we're ahead of, exactly like you're talking about, and they'll be incorporated into the transportation master plan. So, we started on that first, and they have some suggestions and some costs associated with that.
I want to check an assumption I have. The impact fee is paid by the person who is.
It would be, so there's two ways to do it.
Building the property, or?
You can do it at the time of plating, when it's assessed, and the developer can pay, or people can pay individually as they come in and pull a permit.
And I would, I would tell you that it is much better and consistent to pay it at the time of plat, because otherwise, you'll end up with a property owner who maybe is trying to buy the last remnant lot in a subdivision, and they're left with a traffic impact fee of $13,000, let's just say. I don't know. It just makes, you know, we keep talking about affordable housing. The more of those things you layer on, the less affordable things become. So, it's a lot cheaper at the front end than it is at the back end. This is a short way to say that.
So, the traffic impact fee, then, in the, in the traffic analysis, will we be presented with how all that stuff is applied, and the rate at which it's applied, and who pays for it, and the whole thing? Because I'm not real familiar with the traffic impact fee, other than I, positive for the city as far as paying for it, but negative for everybody that's paying it. So, that, all that information will be given to us with the study.
So, I want to make sure that we understand two, so there's two, actually, there's three. But there's two super-big areas on how we pay for roads. One of them is developer participation through the form of an impact fee. It's kind of standard, developers across the state, they're used to that. The other side is those streets that are already under construction, and we pass a street maintenance fee that residents get in their utility bill. And so, from the school of thought where I never want to tax the residents more than they need to, if we plan right, and we spend our dollars right, and we build it right, then I shouldn't have a street maintenance fee. I shouldn't. But everybody's got to pay their fair share, and that means we have to leverage our partnership with the county, because our residents pay road and bridge tax, and we don't have a lot of participation from the county on our city streets. And we're part of the county. So, we have to have some, we have to have some good dialogue, or we need to lobby Austin.
That, that's why I was asking. So, I know there's two or three ways to do that, and I'm just wondering which ones are going to be, if, or all of them are going to be presented to us, and then we make decisions based on that.
And I think the third would even be that pro-rata share, where the developer funded it, and then they, they get paid back.
And this is really, you've said at a couple of different meetings, you can't borrow your way out of street maintenance when you get behind, and this is, this is how you do it, because you can't, you can't sell enough bonds to be able to get it done.
You'll never sell enough bonds to have good streets, ever. You just, you just can't do it. And if we don't have a good, what I'm going to call more-than-maintenance, because it's one thing to maintain it, to crack seal and do those things, our residents get to a point where, I would have people come into Sunset Valley and tell me, man, the roads are bad. No, they're not. We crack seal every six months around here. I dare you to go try to find any infiltration on that street. Is it pretty? Nope. We've not had a street failure in 20-plus years. There's that kind of maintenance, where we're making sure that all of the curbs are sealed, there's no infiltration, and I'm not sure that we have that level of detail and that level of staff, because we don't have that size of a street crew. So, that's the first part. Like, you got to get the basics down. We're not there yet. And then, two, how do we leverage what we have with staff, equipment, and resources, and then some third party? We won't ever get it all done, but we're going to show you the numbers. If we did it all tomorrow, how much we'd have to go borrow, and what that means to the tax rate. It's a scary number, and that doesn't even include the drainage. I had asked Tracy, when we go into those numbers, one cent on the debt rate borrows $3 million. So, just keep that number, keep that number in the back of your mind.
$3 million?
Mm-hmm.
And what would, what is that number in our mind for? Because that's very insignificant in the grand scheme of all the street.
That is exactly right.
That's exactly right.
Right, that's what she's saying. It costs a penny to borrow $3 million, basically, on the, on the property tax rate. Yeah.
Okay. So, if there's no more questions about transportation impact fee, again, on the 13th, I think you're going to get a whole lot more information than you really want to learn about transportation impact fees. The original slides for that was about 30. We narrowed that down to about seven. But let's talk about one-time, if you're ready. I think it's silent, says, yes, we're ready.
So, why aren't it coming out of VERF?
So, some of these are coming out of the VERF, I'm sorry, these are not coming out of the VERF. These are ones that have not been put into the VERF yet. So, in 2016.
Good answer. Thank you.
Yes. In 2016, for some of the new folks, we created a vehicle, equipment, and replacement fund. So, after we bought a vehicle after 2016, then we would now associate the replacement of that vehicle and the cost of that budget every year, right? And we had about half of the fleet in there. So, we realized back in 2016, there was a huge unfunded liability for equipment, and we started the VERF. That's what we call it, but it's the Vehicle Equipment Replacement Fund. That VERF fund, what we do now, a lot of times, is, there'll be one-time money at the end of the year, because sales tax really grew, or it was created, or we had an increased property value that we weren't expecting. Generally, that's not the case, mostly sales tax, and then there's a.
Salary savings.
Or there's salary savings at the end of the year, and then there'll be a small pot of money, and then we make these purchases, the one-time purchases, and we'll turn around and implement that replacement in the annual budget. So, the fee of, and I'm going to take a guess here for the $40,000 replacement, we take that, we divide it by the life of the truck, and that's where we come up with the payment, and then we start paying that annually for each vehicle into the VERF, and the VERF specifically for replacement only.
Ken, I'm not familiar with suitcase weight. What, what is that?
I said the same thing, so.
I mean, I know a lot of terminology, but I haven't heard that before.
It's a counterweight for the front of the tractor.
Okay.
And it holds, like a handle, looks like a suitcase.
And it looks like a suitcase.
And I, because I asked the same question, I was like, what is a suitcase? Clearly, I am out of touch. But yeah, that's exactly what it is. You put that on the top at the end of the tractor.
Yeah, I've got, I've got them. I just have never heard them called the suitcase weight.
Yep, it's a counterweight for the tractor.
Wheelie preventers.
So, like, again, we've, mainly, we're replacing some trucks. We've got some fire department one-time requests as well, mini pumper engine, generator station number one, again, a K-9 unit for the police, information technology, the cameras at City Hall, PD, Public Works, the library are pretty old, real grainy, not.
And cameras, in some cases.
In some cases, she's absolutely right. They're a game camera, and they have a battery. So, the goal is to come in and replace with some one-time money with a higher level of cameras, security cameras.
So, you keep hearing me talk about our annexation policy, and you keep hearing me talk about, we got to be better about how to do that. We have a lot of those developments that have annexation agreements that say we're going to annex at a certain period of time. Those annexation agreements need to include a payment in lieu of that pays for this stuff. We haven't done that as a city. So, in my mind, the residents who are inside the city limits still are bearing a lot of that burden, maybe not in the form of the water, because everybody's paying their fair share, especially if we have water, but definitely, our fires show up through a mutual aid agreement. Our police show up through the mutual agreed, you know, agreement with Sheriff's Department. Public Works certainly shows up if they need equipment to clear roads. So, as we continue to talk about those developers who are coming to us that need, that need a mud consent, and they need the city to agree, okay, there's got to be some buy-in for us on why things are worth it for our residents, so that we don't have to be spending budgetary dollars like this that could have gone toward something else.
And we've started to have those conversations as they come in, and what that looks like with the last few muds that have been in the last month or so.
When you said that we've never, when you said we don't do that, you meant we never have done that.
Correct.
Okay, so we need to start doing that, so we don't have this issue of trying to pay for these things out of normal budget.
So it would be in addition to the budget. So for example, what I've told one particular Ironwood, right, is I need to know what the total population and uses are in, because I need to understand how many police that requires, how many firemen that requires, and how many other city services that requires. I'm going to come up with a dollar amount, and you should put it on your O and M side, so that when we do get to annexation, and they're expected to be swallowed by the city, it's not sticker shock to a resident about having to up certain things. They've become accustomed to paying their portion of city services that they're receiving anyway.
Prior to annexation, they'll already know that cost coming in instead of...
And when they purchase, they'll know that cost. It won't be a surprise. And I, I keep using the Colony as the example. We'll never get to the point where the Colony is okay to be annexed. That one's out the gate. Let's not let any more out the gate.
Andy, let's go to the next. Water and wastewater. Again, just some service trucks, small SUVs for development services. So you'll recall, we, we hired quite a few folks in development services this year, and three inspectors specifically, and they need new vehicles to do infections. And so these will be some one-time requests as well for the Development Services Department.
Can, can you describe the Tahitian manholes and what the reasoning for that is? I'm sure that they just need to be replaced, because, because...
It is.
They're inadequate or...
Well, there's some, there's some, it's just time to go in and rehab them. So they're starting to, they need to be resealed, essentially. And what we did was we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the next three years. This is, I think we had a hundred and fifty thousand last year. There'll be a hundred and fifty thousand this year, and then we'll go in and rehab as many manholes as possible. And they'll do that again the next year until they're all sealed up. These are specific to a location in Tahitian Village, I believe.
Where it reported a hundred and fifty ago last year. Also Tahitian Village?
So it's just the city limits part of Tahitian, I mean...
Service territory.
City Limits part of Tahitian, not the other side of Tahitian.
So it should be the city limits and actually closer, and it sounds like we went into the Business Park a little bit, to the Business Park area and a little farther west.
So any question? This, this is exactly to the question on Wednesday from Steve about, I, I had a question about developers posting fiscal security, and when is that required? For you, they have to either build it or pay for it, and we build it. And then we'll record the plat, and then they can go vertical, right? So they can do that in a lot of cities, one of two ways. They can bond it, or they can give us a letter of credit. Letter of credits are riskier and riskier, and banks don't like to do that. What the developers told us the other day is, "Man, you really should let us off the hook, because banks aren't wanting to do that, and it's hard." Tahitian Village is what happens when you let them off the hook. It doesn't get built. And then we're on the hook no matter what. So I don't... I don't want to be in the real estate business, kind of what we're doing with Pine Forest Six right now. We're not meant to be in the real estate business, but everybody's paying for this, because now it's in the general fund budget. So when they pressure you to move fiscal security, like Sylvia's being super militant about fiscal security, there's a lot of things I'm not militant about, but money, one of my... I'm with money, because I don't want to raise the tax rate.
Yeah, no, it's a lot easier to get it from them prior to or during the development, and impossible to do it after the fact, like you're, like you just described.
Is there any more questions about the one-time purchases? Are we ready to move into the five-year CIP?
Trey, you, you guys do buy boards, and like, we get the best, gee, we're all a municipality price, right?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's a state cooperative, nine times out of ten. If not, we'll follow the purchasing requirements and get three quotes, and generally pick the lowest. But yes, we can buy those right offline, buy board, things of that nature. If you'd like, I can pull up the CIP map, or we can take just a second and take a look at this, assuming the debt rate. This is what Sylvia mentioned earlier, stays exactly the same. You could issue certificate obligations for about ten million dollars.
That's going to probably be closer to thirteen, twelve to thirteen, given the new number of bond just sent out, and that's why Tracy has an asterisk. Additionally, depending on how the financial advisor structure stands, we could have an escalating amount, so that as some of our other stuff pays off, we pick up, and we never really affect the rate to begin with. So to my point of, even today, if you could borrow twelve million dollars, and we're going to look at streets here in a minute, and never impact the tax rate, you can't sustain that. But it's just not, it's just not doable in any city with that amount of money for streets.
And if you want to go to the, I can pull up the CIP, and we can certainly talk about that. The, the projects related to the street reconstruction, which will be shortly after this, the street rehab, and we've kind of broken that down. And then, again, just to mention, that one cent brings about three million dollars in additional capacity. So for example, if the cost of the bridge is sixteen million, and the, its current tax rate yields thirteen, another penny gets you what you need to pay for the bridge, right? And that's kind of how we're trying to break it down, and with all of our current CIP requirements.
And if you remember, in December, we told you, we know it's difficult for business-minded people to believe that debt dropping is a bad thing. But for cities, with the current restrictions we have at the legislature, our plan is to keep the rate steady, so that we can adjust on the M and O and on the debt side as we need to. There's some restrictions in front of the legislature right now that would require us to even include some debt on the other side of the equation, which is going to get harder for us to try to figure out how we're going to balance the budget without impacting the rate. They're trying to do it on the guise of transparency. But what will happen is everything will need to go for a vote, and you know how residents are about debt. And so things sometimes may get into further disrepair, because we're not going to be able to issue, or we'll have to save up enough to do something, as opposed to being able to issue certificates of obligation, so.
And this is just a map with the majority of the CIP, and you should have a sheet that looks something like this on your handout as well. And that's the list of the current CIP. So that's, again, South Street, the Business Park Development, the fiber optic network, which hasn't been started, Blakey Lane Extension, so on and so forth. You can read the list. I won't read the whole thing. But it's what we've been talking about, and just kind of how they've shifted and moved. What I think's important to point out is you can look at that bottom total at the end of each year. Remember, we talked about a hundred and twenty-one million in drainage improvements? We've talked about, at the end of each year, what we expect to spend on this list as well. Some of that's issued through different debt, some of that's paid for by fund, and you can see that in a different fund on the far left-hand side, where it says Funding Source, or it says 4B, that might be the, the EDC's tax dollar, where it talks about current bonds, or if we have fund balance, that one-time money, or even a grant. Those are even broken down by grants, so the Riverbank Stabilization, so on and so over, so forth. But this is the map, if you really wanted a little more detail. And I thought, to start this, it was just, it was pretty neat to show the epicness of, look how much stuff's going on in that little city limits. I mean, this is, that is insane. This isn't the exact, we just have little construction guys, but as you pull that up, it's the Blakey Lane Extension, right? It's the, it's, it's the intersections, right, that we talked about, Old Austin Highway Rehab. This list just reflects all those little construction workers that you see on the screen. And it is a lot of work, and we didn't talk about street maintenance yet. We haven't talked about the new reconstruction yet, and we haven't talked about rehabilitation for streets, which rehabilitation is just taking care of the surface and not changing everything else. We're not talking about closed drainage systems. We're not talking about replacing water or wastewater. Just making the paving surface and rehabilitation smooth enough for everybody to speed on, right? I mean, that is, then think of the extra police for the tickets. So all, all of that is what happens. So what we kind of did was just give you the list, and for the update, we thought we would let you ask some questions here, and see about what you'd like to talk about. One thing that I noted, I don't see on this list, but I know is on here, is Agnes Street. That is grant-funded, except for a small portion, and that could be why Tracy left this off. I think she expects to spend the money this year, right? So we're very close, but if anybody asks, that's why you don't see, that's why you don't see it on this list, right? So you can see she starts at twenty-four, and I think she's making the assumption. We have the grant, we have the match. It's all ready to go, and she's expecting to spend it this year. But I know it's a big project everybody knows about, and it's not on this list, and I didn't want the mayor to catch it. So that's why it's not on there. Right. Very close. I mean, that is, that is planned to be completed, completed by May of 2024, if I'm not mistaken. Could be even a little sooner. So what I have here is the different layers. So if you would like to, like I said, ask any questions, talk about all of them, we've mentioned a little bit, and just to give you a little insight into what's happening, as far as capital improvements, our new GIS employee guru, lover of all things spatial, has basically been working on a map nonstop for this leadership summit. So when we talk about this, it'll even have transportation master plans, it will have the schools' plans, it will have our CIP and how they relate. And just by looking through some of this today, and I've, this is still a work in progress, but it has all of our CIP on there, you can see where the alignments change. So the, the county changed some of their alignments in some draft form that's going to happen. So what it means in turn, we'll have to change our, and that's something we didn't even have on our radar. So it's going to be a great leadership summit. I think we'll talk about a lot of that stuff. But you'll see where they crossed the Colorado in 2016. They don't cross the Colorado there any longer. So again, that means we have to adjust our transportation master plan. What does that mean? All of that good stuff.
I don't see Water Street. Is there a construction man on Water Street? Because I don't see it on the list.
Water Street is part of the rehab. Thank you. That is going to be part of the rehabilitation that's done in-house, and that's actually going to bid this year. We're actually, we're doing geotechnical. So I don't want to say the word "study." We don't want to say the word "study." We mentioned that in the meeting the other day, that they were still studying, and we had a little come to Jesus and realized, what we meant to say was there's geotechnical being done, so that we understand what, all the work that needs to go into it. Water Street, Linden, and Farm.
So it, does that mean there's a little guy on Water Street that says, "I'm getting ready to be improved"?
This is, no, this is a rehab that's in the budget in existing bonds. So that's why you probably don't see it in here. But we can certainly take a look at it, yeah.
Well, it says current bond, street rehab program. It doesn't have the streets on there, so it's, I don't know what's included.
We will put those streets on here if they're not on there. But it should be Water, it should be Linden, and it should be Farm.
Yeah, and six million on the following year, so that's why I thought it'd be a construction guy.
No, it's twenty, yeah, it's 2023. It, it's clear when you go to the PowerPoint to touch on streets.
We can go back to the PowerPoint if you'd like. Got to change sources here, sorry. Again, this is what we talked about with the assumptions of the three million dollars. What we did was we went back and asked the question, does the street maintenance program work, right? And I want to clear out something here. It looks like there hasn't been street maintenance done the entire time, but there has. But what you see in 2020, if you'll recall, the only thing that got done was Old Austin Highway in that, in that year. We went in, did some rehab, came back and chip sealed it, and that actually is in worse shape than it was, because we didn't go in and rehab it completely. We did some patchwork. That actually lost in score in 2020. And what I'll try to convey here is in 2021, that actually, the work that happened in 2021 actually included the list from nineteen, the list from 2020, and the work that was done in 2021. We then in 2022 did another payment condition index, which is what we have updated now. But when Tracy does a spreadsheet, it's just numbers, and it's, it's not always pictures.
So I, I need to defend Tracy and myself, because really, we're trying to solve what is essentially a mathematical problem, right? How do you forecast out, and then how do we stretch those dollars out?
That's right.
So when we moved to negative, I went, "Wait, what happened?" And I learned we did Old Austin Highway, but it didn't last as long as a normal rehabilitation would have lasted. So yes, there is a, there is a negative, and you're going to see some of the other scores too, where we just did maybe a little bit more than a patch job, but not quite a rehabilitation. The score dropped more than one would have expected.
So it's just proof that the Band-Aid doesn't really solve the problem.
It's proof that the Band-Aid doesn't solve the problem, and if you want to throw good money after bad, then you keep just starting a bad base. Yep.
Correct. And that's, that's what Old Austin Highway was. So what happened is there was, the whole thing was bad. We went in and put in ten good spots. Now there's only ten good spots, because the rest of it's even worse than it was before, which is what lowered the score.
So Robert's coming in on a counterweight discussion. He's listening in his tractor.
So what, again, Old Austin Highway, 2022, we performed the PCI. And what I want to point out here in this map is, you can see the hundred and sixty-five point change from 2019 to 2022, is if you'll notice, where we really did the work, and you'll recall, were the streets that were in good shape. So that was Pack Horse, right? The Hunter's Crossing subdivision. We've got some green in there, we've got some yellow in there. And we did a whole lot of work in the Riverside Grove area. We did a little bit of work on Old Austin Highway in 2020. And then what I did in this next slide is I zoomed into those areas that we did all the work. And you can see the difference just in color. I thought it'd be nice to show a picture. We know we had a hundred and sixty-five point increase, but let, let yourself reorient there, but...
So streets aren't part of the Hunter's Crossing Pid?
No. Those have already been accepted. Yes. So what I, what's worth pointing out is, you recall the number of yellow that were there. They're now a light green. So this is where we saw that increase. It's even better in, in the Riverside Grove area. There was, all of that Charles to the north there at the end was all absolutely yellow. Now it's all green. So what we've figured out here is, where it's appropriate, it works great. We're just not doing enough of it, and that seems to be the real issue. And then also to point out, just like we talked about, because we didn't put our whole heart into Old Austin Highway, you can see that's completely red, which was yellow just five years before. So if you want to do the comparison again, and I know every time I shift back and forth, it's because I zoomed into this particular area. This is the whole city, and you can even see the difference if you look close. A lot of these are a light yellow, light orange, if you will, because they weren't in that bad a shape. You can see the difference in deterioration?
They're moving, yeah.
Right here in the old part of town. So there's a lot more red there, which again tells me we're just not doing enough maintenance.
Well, the other part, the other thing that you had going on was you had Piney Creek getting built. So you had concrete trucks and everything else for construction, and not only of the subdivision, but of those homes, and, and they were cutting through, and as they crapped out, that's the technical term, one street, then they would use the grid system and start working on the next street to put potholes in it.
That's right.
And that's what's going to happen with the development by the high school, for whatever reason, I can't think of the name of it. As soon as they start that construction, if those houses, if that development gets going, then all that traffic's going to come through that part of town and even deteriorate those roads.
Are you talking about Farm Street?
Yeah, Farm Street.
No, I'm not, I'm not talking about residential. I'm talking about the construction traffic, because it was going from ninety-five all the way to Piney Creek. The construction traffic for whatever eventually gets built there will be going off of ninety-five and right into the area. Yes, there's additional street traffic, but the, those roads that went from yellow to red is probably not from passenger vehicles. It's from concrete trucks and heavy construction trucks.
I agree a hundred percent, but that, that's what I meant. Now, you're going to have construction traffic for all of that development, as well as when it's finished, you're going to have more people on, on that street than was there before. And then during the process, they're going to be cutting through that part of town and getting more traffic through those streets that you didn't normally have. Like, I, I can see people going down Water Street or any of those other streets, even though it's so bad, just to get to that part of town versus trying to get out on ninety-five through a red light and sitting there for indefinitely, so.
I have a question. So for the Hunter's Crossing, when did the Pid end? When did we finish the Pid?
Um, the, if, and I'm guessing a little bit here, but I, I believe it's 2036 for the residential piece.
So the way, so a public improvement district, people have to agree to be assessed. They have to be, they have to agree to be assessed for certain improvements. But when the legislation was first written, they didn't take into account maintenance, because the plan is that those things are supposed to end, right, and people are supposed to... But, you know, since then, we've gotten smarter and said, "Yeah, they're supposed to end, but they're supposed to end in twenty to thirty years, and streets aren't lasting that long. So we need to put in some maintenance in as a stopgap measure somewhere in the middle of all of that, so that by the time they do turn it over to the city, just like ETJ stuff, we're not accepting bad stuff just because we didn't have the dollars to maintain it or it didn't last as long as it should have lasted." So that's no to us internally. Moving forward, any Pid that we even begin to think about, we got to think about somewhere stopgap along the way. They've got to put some dollars in the maintenance, or we have a really aggressive maintenance plan that's going to make those roads last way longer than when it's time for us to take them over.
But it was created on, I think this is interesting, September eleventh of 2001.
So I guess my, one of, when I was just a civilian on the streets, I was always wondering why so much effort was being put into rebuilding the Hunter's Crossing neighborhood, their streets, versus our streets downtown. streets versus our streets downtown that were far worse. I don't know if that had anything to do with it.
It did, because they were assessed, and there was a certain amount of money we were supposed to spend. And they were assessed based on the square footage of their lot and the value. So anybody who bought in Hunter's Crossing had a buy-in into a good grid street system.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
And I think you were asking a little bit of a different question, too. Hunter's Crossing's, their score in the public payment condition index was higher, so it's cheaper to spend a dollar today than seven in complete reconstruction. But in the, you can actually see on the older part of town, which I think is great to point out, is right up here on the north end, there was quite a bit of green that picked up from some in-house rehabilitation work. So if you remember, 2019, 2020, we received a grant to replace all the wastewater in that area. So the crews came in there and replaced the waste, or had the contractor come in and replace the wastewater. While we had the road open, we said, hey, let's go ahead and put the water line in ourselves. Let's go ahead and do all the drainage. And we came back and did the pavement. And that was, the next complaint we got was everybody was speeding because the road was so smooth. And so that was a good one to have.
What Street?
Her Street now, it's the same one.
We had a, what do you call a dip? And so they fixed the drainage over there and covered the dip and repaved the road. And now, can y'all come to a traffic count? Because, yeah, that's definitely what happens.
So again, that's what I was talking about earlier. Now you need more police for traffic enforcement, and it's just a big cycle. So to maintain streets, we actually broke down the cost model a little bit, and we're going to get into more detail in this later. But this is at a super high level. To maintain the streets, for us to do something like that in-house, is 77 cents a square foot, based on our 2022 contract prices. So we took all the prices that we got for rehabilitation today for Old Austin Highway, for example. And that's where we got that number, based on a, a, a third-party cost. The rehab that we do in-house is the $3.25 a square foot. So when we talk about doing in-house rehabilitation, that's where you come in, you mill off the surface. That's where we're doing the core samples on right now for those three streets, not a study, geotechnical work. We have, we've figured out, we can come back and rebuild that for 3.25 a square foot. But what that includes is some annual salaries for four new FTEs that'll be in the street department, for about $227,000. And we need some additional equipment to make that happen. And that one-time additional equipment cost is 2.3 million.
What is the contract? The 2022 contract, what contract with what?
The 2022 contract is for our, our street maintenance, based on the, what they'll do is they'll come in and do some cutouts, some level ups, and just a chip seal. So it's really about keeping the good streets good. And that's 77 cents a square foot. The rehabilitation, go ahead.
No, he's, he's saying he, we got the number from Old Austin Highway.
Contracts that we had with subcontractors.
Yes.
Yes.
So that's based on things that we subbed out to somebody. Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure.
Yes, that's, that's for this year's maintenance plan. And it's a list of streets, not just Old Austin Highway. But yes. And the rehab is what we're talking about doing in-house. Again, four new FTEs for the street department, and some new equipment, some reclaimers, some things like that that we currently don't have. We have a small zipper, but that doesn't, if you're really going to move up to a, a level of real, doing some rehabilitation, we need some bigger equipment. For example, ours is really for coming in, cutting something out, doing an 11-foot lane, maybe, just for a good patch. We don't have a paver, per se, for, for real work, or asphalt elevators, things of that nature.
So would your $3.25 a square foot go down now that you have some new equipment on future stuff that you do?
So this 3.25, so this maintains streets, that's, I, I don't want to say it's minimal material, but it is, it's less material than what it costs to rehab a street. So this is the least amount that you do, just to kind of make it pretty, you know, fill any cracks, make sure there's no ever any base filler. This one's a little bit more. We may be having to do a little bit more significant repair in some areas. It's going to require more material, some geo-testing, but we can still do this in-house. The reason it's 3.25 is because he has factored in some material of what it would be for.
Okay, all right.
But it also factors in the equipment he already has and purchasing that new equipment. That's how he got to the 3.25.
So that should be worst-case scenario, kind of.
I don't know. Are you going to bet on what material prices are going to be for the next 12 months?
No, no.
Please, you're going to make Robert go like this.
But it's 3.25, that rehab work, again, we would hire probably some very little engineering. They would make some recommendations and say, hey, you need to add six inches of base, for example, or cement stabilization for the subgrade. We would then perform that work in-house. And the material price could change, because one may need six inches, and one may need 12, right? Based off the geotechnical. But we're saying 3.25 a square foot for just a standard six-inch cap. Come in there and mill everything up, lay it back down and cap it with asphalt, basically.
First actually had a much lower number. I, I didn't believe it.
Yeah, it's a good number to go off of. It just shows that the maintenance of the street is-
The maintenance of the streets is a lot less expensive to do it and to do it on a regular basis versus to wait a little bit longer and then spend $3.25 a square foot.
Correct.
So we're paying for our neglect for a while.
So we're going to get to that number here in a minute. If we were to, if we were to like bite the bullet and do all of the street maintenance and all of the street rehabilitation, it's about a $50 million number. If we did it all tomorrow, you guys let that and said, go have at it. And we did it with people and third parties. And then where, that moves those onto the continuum to a five-year cycle, add a 77 cents probably to a dollar in five years' schedule. And it leaves us with the big giant hairy number of street reconstruction.
Okay, so we talked about the, what the rehab entails. Tell me what now this reconstruction at 25 bucks a foot, does that get you utilities and everything? Or what does that get you?
So, so this cross-section of the 3.3 million a mile is based off of our, our current roadway cross-section, right? And that's sidewalks, the drainage work, the road work. It doesn't include the water and sewer. It includes-
Or gas, or rain.
Right. Well, there'll be assignment and things that come with that, but it, it doesn't even include utility relocation. So we could come in, for example, and say we want to do Pine Street today. Well, great. But there's all these power poles, and I almost said telephone poles, and Curtis would have for sure given me the stink eye, but it's the power poles. So those may have to be, those may have to move out or go underground and to make room for those sidewalks and all the amenities and the bike lanes and the, all of that good stuff. And that is where you get the $25 a square foot cost. And again, that's based on our cross-section. I would tell you, as part of our transportation master plan, we should assign some hierarchy of what needs to be the full-blown rehab, like Main Street, where it's comfortable and walkable, there's bike paths. And then we should assign some other streets that have a less, more neighborhood value, that don't have all that extra stuff. And that's what I think you'll see come from the transportation master plan, is anything that goes all the way north-south, anything that goes east-west, makes a lot of sense to be a good thoroughfare. And the other ones are small local neighborhood streets that are costing less than 3.3 million. Maybe they don't have eight-foot sidewalks on both sides, maybe they have six-foot sidewalk on one side, that kind of thing. And that'll lower the overall cost.
Yeah, and we, and you need to do a standard where if it's a north-south street, it's on the north side. If it's east-west, it's on the west side, so that it's, that you end up with contiguous side.
That, yes. That would be the, the hope. And then, go ahead. Another question?
No.
So let's talk about that total street maintenance. And this is just to give you an understanding of what we'd have to spend right now to try to, to keep up. And you can see at the 77 cents a square foot, it's not horrible. But 2024, a little, close to $2 million, 25, $400,000, again, a million. And-
This side of the ledger, all day long.
It's good.
Could we do it in their budget?
Yep.
That side of the ledger.
That's what people pay taxes and think you should take care of.
Correct.
That side and the reconstruction side, that's the big hairy monster.
That's what you can't bind yourself out of.
That's correct. So the, to the far right there, that is something you can't bind yourself out of. And if we took the number of 3.25 a square foot and we overlaid it against the streets that were in shape, that meet the rehab requirement, we're not talking about full reconstruction yet, it would take us 29 years to get all of those streets rehabbed, right?
At the current investment rate, which was $800,000 or so.
Yes. Yeah. So what it points out is we're just not doing enough to make that happen. And what you really want to do, because this is all cumulative, and we've talked about this, and if you get behind the numbers on the spreadsheet, it gets a whole lot more complicated. But basically, once you repair all these streets, they also drop to the maintenance side, which increases the maintenance side, right? So now when a street gets a brand-new life, it's one year's old. Year three, you're putting on the, you're putting it on the maintenance side, you're doing it again at year seven. Now at year 14, you're back to the rehab. I mean, it's just a continual thing. And what it, what it shows is we currently have $6 million in bonds to do those three streets that we talked about.
But, so she put that, she put that on the slide, but that's a little bit misleading because we already have plans for that $6 million.
So that's, is that money that we have just sitting there right now?
Yes, from prior, from prior borrowers that are planned to do-
It's for those three streets. So it's the Farm Street, it's the Linden Street.
And Water.
Water, yes. Yeah. So that's, that money is spent.
Yes. So really, this number should be 16.4 million.
Yes.
Because I said the same thing. I'm like, oh, we already have six. We can find four real quick.
Yeah.
No.
And then when the street reconstruction, we, we came back and, again, same as rehab, if we were to take all the ones that met a certain number, we're talking about 25 years or roughly-
At almost $3 million a year.
Yeah, if we invested $3 million a year, in 25 years, we would finally replace that 40% of the streets that's in such bad shape that they need to be completely reconstructed.
So we just need to bank on spending $3 million a year?
No.
I don't think you have it.
No. But no, because that number's going to grow exponentially if that's all you're spending, because the streets that are really bad get even better.
Is, is the 25 years, should it be 20?
A good street, if it's maintained, will do a 25 to 30-year life, if you're doing what you're supposed to be doing. If you're crack sealing, if you're maintaining, if you're making sure water infiltration isn't happening, if you're super militant with your utilities and not letting them cut the street after you just laid the street, if you're-
If you get the compaction.
Yes, if you're super militant with the utilities, and when developers come in and put, you make them rehab the manholes, you make them seal things up, all of the things that create just a uniform street, your street should last 25 to 30 years.
Is, and I know we've talked about this before, as far as the-
We had to talk concrete streets in some sections of town.
Yeah, as far as the patching and, and coming back and doing utilities. And that's why a lot of our older streets are in the position that they're in, because we, for whatever reason, had to come in and repair old water line, gas line, sewer line. And then the repairs aren't compacted properly, like you said, Mayor. And so should we, should we up our repair details? For example-
Oh, increase the standard? I'm never going to tell you no to that.
Should you use flowable fill for the filling material versus trying to get them to compact in a trench, a small trench, road base? Because that's where the failure, in my opinion, is, is recompacting road base. You're not doing it properly. Nobody's watching all that all the time. If you up their standard to just use flowable fill, then you don't have that compaction problem, that you spend a little bit more money for the material, but then you don't have the depression and the, and from no compaction, or not enough compaction.
I'm not going to let Curtis answer that.
Well, we have, we're swimming to each other.
Because I know in a lot of our big projects that, that I've been a part of, that, that was a requirement. If you would, go back in and you cut in a section that the requirement is to use flowable fill, and then you don't have those compaction issues that, that we have right now.
Well, as we discussed before, you've seen the changes that we made on how we redo streets. The streets cuts that we do now are way different than they were done in the past. The water department, we made them start patching streets for a little while so they understood what it meant. Truthfully, it made them understand what the guys were living through. So now they make us more of an effort to make sure that it is compacted correctly.
Well, that, yeah, a good, good lesson learned. And I know I just had a carpenter go through and set all the nail holes, because the painter, they thought the painter was going to do it. And then painters hate carpenters for that reason. So you let them feel, set all the nails, and then they can start setting their own nails at some point. So the same thing with the road crew. But that, is that, and I know we just did this with accounting of a written policy, right? So that we can have an accounting of the, of the accounting. Is that something we have in writing for the repairs? Or is that something we need to put as a standard and say-
No, we do have, we do have that in writing. And I can get you all a copy of it.
And we do have a standard. So there's, I think there's a couple of reasons that the roads are in the shape they're in. One is for the first, the 40% that's completely in such bad shape is it was neglected for a really, really, really long time. That's one of the big, one of the big things. Two, I don't disagree. The standard has increased for city staff, but there's still a lot of third-party people that come in and cut the street. And if we don't know they're cutting the road, you're right, we don't see how they backfill it. We do have a set of construction standards on how you backfill. I think adding flowable fill's probably a really good idea. But we're also, we're also-
He's going to Tim, isn't he?
Yeah. But we're also need to talk about those things being inspected and a good right-of-way management program. So without, with one good spec, I don't know that that fixes our problem. There might need to be a couple of guys that make sure you're doing what you're supposed to do in the right-of-way.
Do you think you've gotten out all the clay pipe? How much, how much clay do we still have?
Quite a bit.
That's the other thing that happens, is that clay pipe just absolutely disintegrates. And there's no more pipe left. And it's, it's the ground. And then if you get saturated with rains or whatever, that's where the-
Goes right down to-
That's exactly what happens.
So we did hire Tim recently. He's at construction inspection on the development side. But really, his job is just that, is helping here, helping there, and on the development side, to make sure that our right-of-way and our things are done appropriately, so that they don't fail prematurely and then we're stuck maintaining them.
If, if we do consider the flowable fill option on utility patches or whatever, just be sure we factor in the labor savings, because that's faster. You don't have to compact every eight-inch in lifts, and it goes a little bit quicker. So you save some labor, but the material costs more, so.
The technology and the chemistry that has gone into new products on how fast things harden, how much they last, it, it comes out flowable and it just, it, they, at one time, they used to call it maritime grade. I never really knew what that meant, other than you could pour water on it immediately, and it was going to be ready to go the minute sort of out of the bag, quote unquote, the chemical reaction that happens out of the bag. I'm not sure how much of that we're using, but it's, it's a worthwhile experiment to go review our standards. And so that was my next question. In the transportation master plan, did our engineers look at any standards or any improvements that they would recommend that we do?
No, but I do have our, our current city engineer looking to upgrade our, our construction standards overall. So the backfill standards for how you backfill our pipe, how you backfill everything, we're reviewing those. We review those every few years. So we're doing it again.
And I say that because part of the, you know, Corpus Christi has a $1 billion street problem. You just can't get your arms around it. And one of the very first things that was recognized early on, through the development process, is no, the streets don't last because the road base is kalyte or road base is horrible, or the compaction standard isn't there. The construction of the initial road itself was bad. So we had subdivisions failing within the first two and three years of their construction. And, and we had a, we had a monumental battle with the development community, because to improve the road base to granite, crush granite or limestone or something that's harder, meant additional costs. And we had to fight the argument about, oh, you're affecting affordable housing, you're this, you're that. Well, the reality of it is, if I got to tax you to do it, because we didn't do it when it was cheaper to build it, you know, we'll, we'll just, it's a, it's a perpetual bad cycle. So it is a good worthwhile exercise to review our standards.
So the overall cost for streets, though, that we, just I want to point something out, because this is a big number. So the, with the, with the, just over a whole lot of square feet, right? About 2 million square feet, almost 3 million. The cost associated with that for the new street reconstruction is a little over 71 million, right? So-
Today.
Today. If we were to today, to replace that 40% of the streets that are in a failed condition, we're talking 71 million. And that, doing that over 25 years is just not acceptable. So what we're needing, what we're going to need to find, at minimum, is more than the 2.8 million in a funding source, right, to, to speed this up. So we know we need 2.8 million, and that won't get it done, just to, just to get things done in 25 years.
Well, we know we're doing 2.8 million on average right now, and it's not getting it done.
Correct. But we need, we need more money.
So we're doing that now, 2.8 million?
On average. She took what we did.
Okay. Okay. So we need to really do 3.5.
And some of that, some of that in her average, some of that was debt, some of that was grants, some-
that was grants, some of that was one-time money.
Okay.
And yet, and it's just accidentally the exact same number? Two million, eighty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one square feet and two million, eighty-three thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars?
That can't be right.
Yeah.
That, well, when I said we're sure that's it, that was my way of...
Really?
That number may not, but I've seen, I've seen the sausage making and...
The seventy-two million, I told you, yeah, no problem.
That, yes. She probably...
So I have a few questions and comments, and I'm sitting here feeling kind of stressed and disappointed. Let's just say that we had roads that were uniformly, like some uniform distribution of, of failure rates, everything from brand-new, perfect, all the way to failed, and there was kind of an equal number of each. To start with, that is an assumption. If you've got seventy-two miles of road, that means that you're going to need to replace two point four miles per year at a cost of eight million dollars. That means you're going to need to rehab ten miles per year, that's once every seven years, which is a cost of ten million dollars a year. So assuming the roads are just in a normal, not destroyed state, we're going to need eighteen million dollars a year just to keep up with basic maintenance. This is kind of A. B, if you did this over whatever timeframe, like, you know, twenty-five years, which is not acceptable, right? That's for forty percent of the roads. By the time you got done with that, the other sixty percent would be complete crap.
That is correct.
So I, I, I think the thing I'm disappointed at is that the numbers on these slides aren't bigger, because the problem is bigger. And I think this is underselling how big the problem is. And, yeah, that's kind of, I don't know where to go with that, but it's, seems like this is very serious.
Well, it's a, it's a...
Well, it's the result of council not investing, and it's not in the last five years, it's the ten, fifteen, twenty, for every year.
But I'm saying that even if council had done a perfect job in all history, it's still going to cost eighteen million dollars a year just to maintain the roads going forward. Because they have to, each, every road has to be replaced every thirty years, and every road has to be maintained every seven years.
Well, but that's assuming, um, no, that's assuming, that's assuming that your maintenance program isn't as aggressive as it needs to be.
And it's not effective.
Well, but, okay, I, I thought we said earlier that it, with an effective maintenance program, you had to replace...
Twenty-five to thirty years, yes.
Yeah, so I said thirty years, I gave the top end of that, right? So that means you have to replace, if you've got seventy-two miles of road, two point four miles a year.
But at thirty years, at thirty years, you shouldn't have to be redoing all of the sidewalks, all, you know, you shouldn't have to be redoing all of that. At thirty years, it moves it from complete reconstruction. In, in my mind, it's a continuum, and they don't all go to a certain level of the continuum at the same time. So, for example, Pecan Street and Pine Street were built at the same time. There's a little bit of geotechnical difference among each of the streets, maybe one of the streets had a little bit of infiltration. We're going to need to touch Pecan a little bit more than we touched Pine, and Pine may last longer, a function of how many cars and things on the street, and a function of how good we are at rerouting some of that big traffic during building. So it's a little bit of an algorithm to figure out, but it's not an exact at thirty years, at seven years, at ten years.
Right, but you, every engineering model I've ever created is flawed in some way, right? It's never actually that, but you have to create a model for something to, to create...
That's how they got for seventy-two million?
Except that they've also said that it's flawed.
Yeah.
And, and the flaw is that if they did only this seventy-two million, then the sixty percent of streets they didn't address would be complete crap.
Well, it's because it has to be that page and the page before it as well.
It's, it's, it's a hundred million.
There's this huge gigantic hole.
Yeah, yeah.
And you have no chance of filling it in unless you start filling it in.
Yes, exactly.
Yes. And, and this is...
It's a hundred-plus million issue, not even including drainage. What, what we just showed you today, I'm sorry, is more than a two hundred million dollar issue.
Yeah.
And you're getting more streets every year.
Correct. And this was just...
You're assuming, you're making an assumption that...
You're making an assumption that every neighborhood that we have a development agreement with is building their streets to perfect standards, and that they're going to last for a length of time as well.
Well, and this is, this is mainly to point out that what we're doing is not enough, right? The two point eight million's not getting it done, or it'll take twenty-five years. Oh, and by the way, for every penny, you get three million. So, right, that's, that's, that is the point. There's options here where we find additional funding. Is it fees? Is it tax increase? Is it a different funding source, grants? There's multiple funding sources.
It's all of them.
It's all of them.
It's all of them.
I, I still feel like that, in order to, to kind of comprehend what we need to do, that I, I need a yearly number that says what it is we need to spend on a yearly basis to solve this problem.
Does she have a summary?
And I do look at it as, as a, as a thirty-year model, like as in, let's list every street in the city, and which year we're going to replace it, a hundred percent of them, and how much that's going to cost, and then the maintenance every seven years, whatever the, the maintenance program is. There's a street, there's a cost, there's a maintenance, there's a year that it's done, you can rank things based upon the index, the, the condition index, right?
We can share that with you, what...
But then, but then ultimately, you know, that's going to be a thirty-year number that represents, okay, thirty years, every street's now been replaced, and that has some cost associated with it that's massive, and you divide that by thirty, and, and that's how much it costs per year, and I suspect it's going to be more than twenty million a year. And we're looking at something that's much larger than what we've even talked about here today.
And, and what we're talking, and what you're also talking about is a little bit of, of asset management, right? And that's, that is exactly where we're headed, so that it'll be on a list, it'll have a score, it'll have an age associated with it. So this one's seven years old, this one's fourteen, and we can give you that annual number, and that's exactly where we're trying to head, so that each year it spits out, we need twenty million, or we need six, you know, fifteen this year, but next year we need thirty-two, that kind of, that kind of plan.
And how are we going to pay for it all, keeping the rate stable?
Yep.
So I have, I have two comments about, not necessarily how we got here, but how we manage things moving forward.
Right, right.
We, we talk about densities being great, and they increase the value, and they X, Y, Z. They also increase the amount of traffic on the street, and they decrease the longevity on the street, if you're not building the street, to a greater, more denser standard. So one, we got to have the conversation about concrete streets, especially in the areas where we're going to do, we know we're going to do an overlay somewhere. We know that the Iredale District was removed, but we also know that the Iredale District has a place in some segments of town, historic, whatever. Those are going to have greater densities. And when we do have things like Farm Street Village, or we do have things like West Bassdrop Village, or we do have the things that have a super dense requirement, Cary Fossler's development is less than four acres, it's three point nine acres, and I think the other day I heard the number forty-two units on that site. Forty-two units. That means forty-two average daily trips per household, multiply that number times four or five according to transportation plans, multiply that times the number of trips on a street within a system who still is building a residential street to a regular residential standard that had densities of four units per acre. We ain't never going to get there. We're gonna have to talk about a street standard for those more denser areas. It's just a, it's just a given, because we'll never build our way into a street that can handle that much that we won't be revisiting on a faster schedule.
Yeah, that, that, and there's an assumption that people are going to walk or bike out of those, that dense of a development, right? I mean, that was the whole plan for, was if you have a dense development like that, then you put a little store in the middle of it, and you're multimodal, you're walking or biking or roller skating or whatever through it. So, but the, the reality of it is that's, that probably isn't going to happen. And so you're right, we do need to look at, maybe we have concrete streets in those sections versus base and asphalt, so that they do last longer and do hold up for the more dense building that's going to go on in those. We need to look at that for the Pearl, the Pearl Development, because that's going to have, potentially have that too.
Well, and my, my comment to that is, even if, even if it was multi-modal, and even if I believed that everybody really was going to walk everywhere or bike everywhere, even if I believed that in my heart, which I don't, because we live in Texas, and that's just not what we do, even in Austin, it's just not what we do. I still have buses that go down those streets, I still have the trash trucks that go down those streets.
Yeah, the UPS, the Amazon truck.
Yes, I still have all of those increases. So my point is, it's not that I want to say density is a bad thing, because we are, nobody's making any more land. I mean, let's be honest, right? Nobody's making any more land. We're not Dubai, we're not out filling Gulf of Mexico with extra land. But there is a point in time where you have to really think about the number of daily trips and its effect on the streets, and it is a direct relationship. It's a direct relationship. I know people say concrete streets are ugly, they're noisy, they're this, but the reality of it is, we're not in a position to keep having to touch it, and a concrete street is a forty to fifty.
It is a forty.
Yeah, that's my question, the lifespan and the cost.
Forty to fifty.
And then the cost compared to the...
And that depends on the market of the oil, and so...
You also don't want to be...
Yeah, no, there's expand, yeah.
The cost though?
The cost, yes, it's going to depend on, number one, the engineering and the planning is going to be a little bit more expensive, because you want to do really good planning so that you're laying where the utilities are allowed to go, you're pre-laying those through conduit, through whatever, and you have a really militant right-of-way policy. And I mean militant, like, nobody gets past go without.
So cost?
There was, there was a point where...
I mean, compared to the three point three million a mile, what's the cost?
There's a point where asphalt and concrete were the same.
And that's why Farm Street's concrete, basically, right in front of the school.
Okay, so about the same with a longer lifespan.
It all depends on the price of oil.
Yes, it all depends on the, well, there's a couple factors, it depends on...
Well, no, I get it, it depends, I'm looking for the not-itdepends answer, off the, for the first answer, but then...
We can give you, we can give you a concrete street cost today versus an asphalt street today.
Absolutely.
But even if you, what it's going to be in a year, I mean...
Yeah, yeah. No, no, I, I, I appreciate that it changes and that, and I even understand a little bit about what would cause it to change, but at the same time, you know, is it, you know, three point two trillion times more expensive? Is it one point five times more expensive? Is it, you know?
Yeah, and it's balanced. There's a reason that Houston has all mainly concrete streets, not necessarily just a subgrade because the soil there's horrible, but, yeah.
And the brown block comes up. Yeah, I was going to say, flooding.
So we don't have the same conditions, but it, we need to look at all, all of that and get those costs, so we can compare and see what it's, what it's going to be like. And I think Curtis would be happy with a militant, uh, right-of-way policy, because that...
That's good for you.
Yeah, he'll be doing a happy dance over there.
Are we done? You had questions?
I think we are.
Yeah.
Okay, because you started to say something, then you...
Yeah, I know.
Well, I didn't want to leave you with a womp-womp, this is, this is it. My hope is that as we work through the budget, we bring back solutions, we bring back at least, this is an idea, and this is the potential cost. I told you that I'll never leave a nickel on the table if I can, because there's so much unmet need, so much unmet need, so, you know.
Sylvia, I think you also have to acknowledge, not only is there unmet need, you have no idea what the legislature's going to do in the coming years, so you, you may never get it back. And then you're not talking about, well, we can't bond our way out, because, oh, you can't do the bond either, and, you know.
And I just want to circle back across a couple things for myself and make sure we're getting what you asked for. So I, what I heard was some type of cost for concrete versus asphalt?
Yes.
A, a recommendation on the real cost of streets? If it was, if we had just a whole pile of money sitting there, and what would we do to maintain and keep it done? You want that recommendation for the next thirty years?
I, I don't see it as if we had a whole pile of money, I just, under prudent...
What's ideal conditions?
Prudent, not ideal, under minimum maintenance.
Got it.
To keep the roads functioning over their lifetime and to replace them at the end of their lifetime, that has a cost, and it should be, you know, make some bad assumptions that everything's in a, you know, reasonable state today, and it's all going to, each street's got a thirty-year lifetime, and then what does it cost to rebuild them all? And that divided by thirty is our baseline price, and it's going to be massive.
But that's the issue to that.
Right, and then...
Baseline situation, right?
No, no, I know, I know that, I'm saying that that's the baseline, and then it's actually worse than that.
And then from there, how do we catch up?
And then down and back to that, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You also wanted to separate what our grants and matches are, I heard that early on. And then we talked a little bit about a fee in lieu of for drainage.
And list the names of the streets on your street rehab each year.
Got it.
Because we don't know what those are.
Yeah, so there's a lot of numbers that we need to look at...
And county participation.
Just so that we can get a master plan. And then I'm assuming we're going to get the same street index like you have the color-coded and show exactly what streets are going to be...
We have it in an Excel sheet, which is what I think John was looking for, Curtis provided, Tracy and I have been working on it. We just added some formulas, the 2018 was this, the 2022 was this, the expectation is this in the next year, and it's just a formula-based math. We're adding some pivot tables to say, okay, we did it in seven, now it should come back in eight, but it should come back at seventy-seven cents, not three twenty-five, so...
Yes.
Yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead, no, go ahead, John.
I, I want every street in the city on that spreadsheet, yeah.
And forecasting as we annex the new streets.
Left off Pecan Park Streets, right, is that one, because those were...
I thought it was The Grove. Pecan Park is in there, but The Grove, we haven't updated it since The Grove, it wasn't built when they did the PCI. But we'll, so also just to make you aware, what we've talked about is actually some truck mounted equipment, so we can do this annually, and then staff would go out and drive, instead of waiting every five years for a PCI from a company. It's fairly reasonable now to go ahead and get the same software mounted to the bumpers and drive around and get the same PCI annually, and that'll give us a whole lot better information.
So of the equipment, I'm sorry, Cheryl, of the equipment that we're going to buy, does the county own any of that?
That's a good question.
Because part of the participation may be access to their equipment.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, I would assume that they do have that, since they have so many roads to take care of.
Sorry, Cheryl.
I was just wondering where, where, what's our timeline for the master, because I feel like all of the questions and input would be included in the master transportation plan that's, that's going to be presented to us or for review, right?
It will be, and, and we just...
There was a lot in here that I took out, because I figured y'all weren't ready for it just yet.
Yeah, and we awarded the master transportation, we awarded the master transportation plan
in April, April twenty-fifth, I believe, and so that's ten months. So we're still, we're going to continue to work on that for the next several, several months. Today was the impact fees, and we have the recommendations for the intersections. So we did three things with Kimley-Horn. One was the intersections, one was a potential transportation impact fee, and the transportation master plan. The first two are almost finished. The last one, we just, we're about a month in, so you'll see a whole lot of interaction with us and with the county, making sure that everything matches.
Yeah.
So there'll be a whole lot of public input.
Do you want to see draft versions of the first two?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that would be great. Yeah, yeah, I mean, that'd be great. I was just thinking that a lot of what's been asked and discussed, we're going to see, we, we, I mean, it's good input, of course, but we're going to see it, right?
We, we kind of already know the engineers, but what Kinley Horn's doing is really just solidifying what we already feel is the hypothesis, which now they're just putting it on paper.
Uh, where does the, the intersection of Chestnut fit in? Because I know that's all text dot, and there was some talk earlier in our conversations about turning left, um, not being able to turn left off Ninety-Five, and I was holding off on my question to see if maybe that was going to be given, another picture was going to be given, and it hasn't, so.
You probably have a, you probably have a-
I probably have a drawing, I probably do, and the-
My kind of concerns about, about that, I get the safety aspect of it, but so many of, I turn left to come into town to avoid having to drive through Chestnut, I think that, um, I just wonder how that's going to impact people that actually live in town that need access from Ninety-Five, to maybe find a better route into their homes, to their homes in town, or to the school, or whatever, not being able to turn left. I certainly get the concept of it for safety, and in my brain, I'm thinking of how convenient roundabouts are, which might be kind of hard on Ninety-Five, but, I know. But, um, I also kind of think that not being able to turn left might cause some problems as well, and I was trying to think during the conversation how to mitigate that, and I haven't been able to come up with anything.
So, we have some good, hopefully he'll be able to bring it up. We have a, we have a relatively good diagram that we were trying to work out with the school on what that stacking and circulation would look like, if we only put a light at the other side, um, by Bucky's, so that forced people to use pit on the back end, and then if we did some other traffic on the other side where the school is, how they would circulate and stack, and I think this goes-
Sorry, I wasn't prepared for that question, give me just a second. But you're, what we, what we talked about quite a bit was not only, let's see here, I do have another PowerPoint, was-
And this is a, totally a text dot, left-turn lanes and everything, that's going to be on Ninety-Five?
Yes and no, but there has to be coordination with the city, and then there's obvious, there's an obvious impact to the school with their buses and everything else, so we're just, we're being super, super, super sensitive to everybody whose plan.
But Jimmy, you're exactly right. If the city thinks it's great, and the school thinks it's great, and the state says, I don't think so, the answer is, I don't think so.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking, and, and I, I'm glad that everybody's at the table for it, because we have so many schools right on, or right next to Ninety-Five, so that is going to be a huge thing, and then, but, to your question on the impact of residents on the left-turn lanes, because that does help all of it, but that, that's going to be, I think, fall in with the mayor just said, too, you just have to find a new route, maybe, or a different time of day to leave some, some places.
And, and I think we're still on the agenda, because it will absolutely include intersection improvements. But what Techside has done is studied these spots, where you see where the eight different numbers, and then they looked at the turn-in movements for every number that's on here. And I know that looks messy, but basically they count how many left turns, how many right turns, how many folks go straight, so on and so forth, and they did it all the different places. What they do is they come back with recommendations, um, you know, what, what they think what the standard is.
No one can turn anywhere.
Yeah, right, so they come back with what the standard is, and then they'll say, oh my goodness, where we thought Bucky's was, you know, eight-hundred-and-fifty-five to nine-forty, it's a thousand-and-eighty, right? So, then they try to come up with solutions based on that, and what they've figured out is this is a really busy street, right, basically, which we already knew, but they counted and did the math. And the bottom line is, at some point, I think the, the traffic engineer told me, um, there was eight-hundred cars an hour that left Bucky's out of one of the different exits, right, on a Sunday. So, everybody traveling back and forth from College Station to UT, or so on and so forth.
[inaudible].
And so, they looked at all the peaks. There was a, there, and I don't know if I have the accidents, but basically, um, they pointed out some other significant traffic impactors, right? The Suncoast gas station, Bucky's, uh, the traffic that comes from Emile. Um, so we've coordinated with the school, we've coordinated with the county, we've coordinated with Techside, and said, how can we fix this? And what they do is they come up with some recommendations, which is what I'm trying to get to, and clearly that's not the right slides. Um, let me just try this one more time. Majority of that was printed off, that's what I'm thinking, and I don't know that I have that specific layout. Um, here, that's what we just looked at. This is the volume graphics.
[inaudible].
Well, this is the, there's only seven, this is the volume graphics, not the solutions, but I can tell you where, what they were. Essentially, um, they're talking about some enhanced signage, and wayfinding signage at Bucky's, making, and limiting this to a right-in, right-out-only driveway, limiting Pine Street to a right-in, right-out, installing a signal at Walnut, so there'd be a brand-new traffic light, again, with some coordination and signalization improvements all the way through. They had suggested perhaps bringing Walnut all the way through to here, would make a whole lot of sense, and that would be a free turn and intersection, so that would fix the Pine Street problem that you're talking about. Pine Street's extremely narrow, because there's a lot of water that runs through there, there's not necessarily enough room for the traffic that goes through that direction. Um, that would help with the queuing, here's-
So close to the intersection, because people do try to turn left off of Pine and go north on Ninety-Five.
Where we really have trouble is people trying to turn left out of Emile, left out of Pine Street, and left out of Bucky's. That's the bottom line. When it's a whole lot easier, what the, what the improvement they would suggest would make people come up the road, turn right on Walnut, and bring your way back around to the frontage road that way. That's how I leave every day, because it's actually quicker if I stop there, but, um, a lot of folks will sit here at the driveway and, and wait to take a left, and that's where the conflicts and a lot of the accidents are happening. But, um, I've heard, you know, several times-
No, it was a handout, the only thing I-
It was a handout. Is the, is the, and I, I have that handout, I'm happy to scan it and send it to you. But moving traffic's a lot like moving cattle, so you set the pins where you want, and they'll, they'll follow that direction. And that, that's kind of the goal. So, right now, we're in a very high-level study, we're in coordination, but there will be some capital expense associated with that for the city. And the current number, just for the signalization, that would happen at Walnut, and the improvements here, um, to coordinate that signalization, is, is around eight-hundred thousand. That doesn't include the raised medians in, in Highway Ninety-Five, or anything of that nature.
And if you start, if, if all of those intersections start functioning better, then you'd turn at Chestnut, because you wouldn't, the reason you're turning at Pine's because you don't want to wait for the light.
And, and was synchronization of the lights also part of that plan, too?
It is, it is, add additional light and synchronize them all.
And is the eight-hundred K our part, or is that the whole project?
That's, that's just our part, yeah. Yeah, it's a, it's a big, expensive job. So, and what we're talking about here is it would actually improve raised medians, right? Because what you don't want people is pulling out of here and then doing a U-turn. So, they'll be, they'll be raised medians where you can't drive across, and things of that nature. Um, yeah.
Well, you could take it to the-
You could, I guess, drive across it, yeah. Not a challenge, just a safety measure.
It's scary, Robert comes out of here, like, waves back and forth, scary.
So, um, no discussion of expansion, or creating extra lanes, at least closer, certainly where the Bucky's is, because I, I do agree that, um, I think we all know that the turning left there at Bucky's causes on, on both Walnut and the entrance to, yeah.
There is expansion, um, and widening plans to the north of Chestnut, I know now, for Ninety-Five, almost all the way to Elgin. I don't know, I don't believe there's any widening improvements here. There might be some, but not much, a lot of the right-of-way is already taken up, and they never want to get rid of these free rides. We can, we have some opportunities to help and participate, and this is why it's important, this is why it's super-important when you're approving a set of site plans, where site plans go to P and Z, that, um, you know, this particular driveway required a variance for Bucky's, for example, that was not required. They came and got the initial variance, but now there's a cost associated with that many, many years later. And that's-
But Bucky's isn't paying for it.
That Bucky's is not paying for, it's going to be the taxpayer, that's my point. So, that's why all those things are important.
Why was the variance needed?
You were only allowed to have so many driveways, and they were coming in off pit, they actually came in and got permission at council with this driveway.
You think the right-in, or, what is it, right-in, right-out would solve a lot of issues, quite honestly, there in at Walnut, but-
The same will be for Emile.
But if you're going to put a light at, they're going to put a light at Walnut, that would, that would resolve a lot of that traffic from Casa Chapala and that area in Bucky's.
Is there a right-of-way on Walnut, on the west side?
So, there's, there is not right-of-way on Walnut, that would require, that's cool to help us. There was Wal, there was right-of-way there up until two-thousand-and, I want to say eleven? In order for Bucky's to be built, we needed an easement for the school to run the sewer line, and, and for that easement, we gave up the right-of-way for them to, oh, the right-of-way. So, once we gave up and abandoned the right-of-way, um, we would have to acquire that back, so, or maybe they would help us and just let us have it, we'll see. But there's actually existing right-of-way through here as well. So, this is unopened up, think, um, Washington Street. So, if you, at some point, if, if we so chose, uh, this could actually come a little way through to Walnut as well, and we have an agreement on file that would get rid of this access, if that were to happen. So, that would actually improve that intersection quite a bit, because it would move the proximity of the driveway into that free ride.
Yeah, if you could send us a copy of that, that'd be great, thank you.
Are there any other questions about CIP?
So, the eight-hundred thousand for the signalization, is that on your CIP, or y'all going to discuss it? Was it on my list, and I didn't see it?
It's not on the list, this is something that they're proposing, we've just had some high-level discussions about it, we're not ready yet, but that's their estimate at the moment.
So, I put a place, I put a placeholder on your, on your funding list, or to consider, maybe try to get a feel from them on the timing of when you would need that money? Because that, that is not going to get better.
Yeah, and you might as well make it an even million, because by the time we do the rest of that stuff, it's going to be more than that, probably.
Weren't, weren't they adding, um, right-turn lane, too, into Bucky's? Like a designated between the frontage road and that first little entrance there?
I do believe there was some, some improvements here for the right-in, right-out.
Yeah, so you just have one lane-
Some shoulder improvements.
Possibly turn into the right.
Yeah, and I'll put, and send it after this meeting.
Yeah, it's not going to get any better, it'll just get worse.
Sorry to leave you all this on a Friday afternoon.